Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 2nd, 2013 school board meeting. We were in executive session discussing personnel and confidential matters. Actual. We are being videotaped. And I think we'll start with rising people.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with the introductions. Lynn, we'll start with you.
Lynn Lenhart.
Kate Navarro.
Michael Cooper.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Diane Stever.
Matt Downey.
Laura Bierman.
Charmaine Redesinger.
Judy Kehoe.
And recognition of visitors on an agenda item. Oh, it's on. You can't hear me? Okay.
I can't hear.
I think it doesn't really, I think it goes more to the, can you hear me now? Any visitors on an agenda item? First item is approval of the minutes for the December 19th, 2012 regular board of ed meetings. It's the first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That carries. And student senate report? We'll wait, maybe that will come in later. And superintendent's report.
Thank you. Members of the Board of Education, ladies and gentlemen who are present tonight, first of all, Happy New Year and thank you for coming out and spending a little time with us at the Board of Education meeting on the first meeting of the 2013 school year. It's my pleasure to talk about an outstanding staff and administration, but also about a community as we face the end of the Mayan calendar and on Friday, the 21st. And I just wanted to report to the board, the Bethlehem Police Department, along with many members of the community, as well as the faculty and staff and the administration, tried to make the day as peaceful and pleasant as possible, given the surrounding natures of everything that was happening at that time. And I want to thank everybody, especially the town supervisor and the Bethlehem Police Department for making a very visible presence on a day that raised a little anxiousness across the state and I imagine across part, a good portion of the Northeast. So certainly our hats go off to the men in blue for the BPD, as well as our Sheriff's Department and the state troopers who are also very prevalent throughout the district on the day before our holiday recess. In addition, I'd like to recognize that over this holiday recess, we had some tournament teams in the area of basketball, and both boys and girls are off to an outstanding start with undefeated seven and oh season so far, and I'm sure that really lent to good cheer throughout the community over the holiday recess. In addition, our Slingerlands Elementary Teacher, Mr. Bedore, has been discussing the lost art of cursive handwriting with the Times Union story, "Cursive Writing Becoming a Postscript." And we'll have that soon on our website so that others can follow. It is one of the issues in education today is are we losing some of our educational mores and values from the past, as all of us certainly went through the times of cursive writing. And it's a wonderful discussion, but it's also a good form of debate where we can focus on education instead of some of the other issues that have been prevalent. In Glenmont, they were hosting a winter carnival and a disco party coming up on Saturday, January 12th. If you're interested in going or volunteering, please see the website for potential forms and donations. Also, as a matter of community outreach, I'd like to inform the community that the BCTA, our Teachers Association here at Bethlehem, will be offering a parent wellness night for parents of elementary students on January 14th. The evening has four sessions specifically designed to help parents make their lives a little easier, and the details are also on our website. And I know the BCTA also will be following this up later in the spring with a secondary parent wellness night. Ladies and gentlemen, also, just to be aware that in the very near future, the Bethlehem Central School District, combined with the other 43 school districts of the capital region, will be sending out special invitations for members of our community, business circle, our chamber, our town, as well as our parents and the Board of Education, to participate in a legislative night at Columbia High School in East Green Bush on January 31st. So if you would like to be part of that, please contact the superintendent's office or reach out to one of the board members, as we are trying to put together a very solid team to help with the educational issues of the future for schools in New York State, but especially here in Bethlehem. And that concludes my report for the two days that we did not have a board meeting from last week. Thank you very much and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, Tom. One thing that I forgot to mention is our participation in government students. If we go past nine, we will take a break so you guys can come up and sign out. You don't have to leave, but you can stay if you want if we go past nine. Board of Education report. I just have a real quick thing. I wanted, we've received this from New York State School Boards Association, a Board of Achievement Award to Charmaine. So, congratulations. And then we have a presentation for, on CPR.
Hi, I'm Julie.
It will be in just a second.
Okay. I know you guys can hear me.
You can hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Hart with the American Heart Association. Yes, that is my last name. So I'm here today to present CPR Anytime Kits to the school district. One of our top priorities for the American Heart Association is trying to make sure that every student learns CPR before they graduate. And the reason that this is so important is that nationwide, 383,000 people suffer from sudden cardiac arrest each year, but only 11% of those actually survive. But with CPR, you can double or triple the chances of survival. So it's critically important in those first few minutes for people to have bystander CPR. And you may not know this also, but four out of five sudden cardiac arrests actually occur in the home. So if someone performs CPR, they're most likely going to be performing CPR on a loved one. So we've made this one of our top priorities in trying to get this into the schools, and Bethlehem has done a great job of training some of their students in CPR. The first time I actually learned CPR was down that hallway in 1988. So Bethlehem has done a really great job, but we're hoping now that you can do even more. And thanks to a generous donation of First Niagara, we're able to present the school with 16 CPR Anytime Kits. It includes a mannequin and a DVD, and will allow you to teach CPR to students in just one or two class periods. Hands-only CPR, it's significantly easier to teach and it's easier to learn. So we're very thankful that Bethlehem will be doing this, and we're glad to have the opportunity to present you with these kits.
Great. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to say thank you to Kate Navarro, who actually did make the request to receive these kits on Bethlehem's behalf.
Before she leaves, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Hands-only CPR, I would imagine is just the chest compression.
Yeah, just compressions is what we're advocating for those that aren't certified.
Okay.
So, and most of you in this room above a certain age will know the song Staying Alive. That's what you do the compressions to. The high school students may not know that, but hopefully they can teach that.
And then I have a question for Ms. Monroe. Do you have any sense, or has there been any discussion, in what classes this might be taught? Is it like PE or is it something else?
It could be brought into PE or most likely health. It could also be done for students who are interested after school. I don't know, Mr. Powers, if you're doing that something.
Education class. For start of grade.
Thank you for being so, so accepting.
Oh, it's a wonderful donation.
So, it's great.
We've been doing it three years and three years in Elsmer family school, but I think it's a great idea to move down to Elsmer, especially with the hands-on.
It's a great thing, and the seniors should take advantage of it, the juniors, everybody, because you will never feel so helpless if you see someone drop in front of you and you have absolutely no idea what to do. And it got a lot of press when the 12-year-old boy dropped in colony at the Little League Field, and the only reason he is alive is because the coach knew how to do CPR. And there was no question.
Yeah, and there was another case where a little boy recently actually saved his father. He learned CPR through the CPR Anytime Kit in school last year, an eighth grade student saved his dad's life. So, thank you.
Great.
Thanks, Julie.
And next we have our facilities discussion. Not sure where we want to start with this.
Well, we're going to give a brief overview. I'm going to ask Ms. Kehoe to talk a little bit about the financial questions that were asked at the last meeting, as well as Mr. Nelti to just go over real quick the overall list and the confirmed verification now of all of our prices. So we've been dealing with some prices that we've been waiting to get as we've sort of driven our architect probably a little nuts over Christmas vacation for their company to really get to this point. So, Mr. Nelti, I'll put that up for you if you want to walk through it.
I have a question. When we go over, I have some questions on that list. There it is.
Okay. Can you hear me? As we talk, this has been a continual work in progress. Basically, all of the numbers have been confirmed now for the projects that we know. If you look, the column says total bond including soft costs. That's basically, we've been primarily dealing with the hard cost construction that you see in the five-year plan, but we ended up tacking on about 39%, which at the end of this chart, which kind of broke down what, where are we? Soft costs include and its breakdown. We have a design contingency of about 9%, construction contingency for unknowns as we get into the project of 10%, and then what we call incidental costs, which is broken down, which you can see up there as well. We had a few, actually, we had one new line item which we added, which is in blue, which is the security enhancements, which basically enhance security at our entrance vestibules and possibly some other items that we can discuss further. Another breakdown that we provided, just to give the board various options, are the priority twos, which I'll zip to. We looked at items, you know, potentially that are less critical, and we basically highlighted those in yellow. And that's basically been the update that Dan and I worked on over, over break week. At the end, you'll see items in gray that have zero costs. These items have either been completed at this point, or they are not needed anymore for various options, for various reasons.
And all of this is available. It's been on the website. So we have, have already posted this to make sure that we've got the information out there for the community, or you can contact our communications department, Mr. DeBolle will make sure that you get an active copy. And we did do a color code at the end, just to help people along with the chart.
Charmaine, I have a couple of questions. One is just to note that on the, the added item in blue 28, I am a little concerned that of the, I understand that that amount, you explained is mostly for the entry systems only, but in the bond, I would like to look for an additional parked set of money for items that may be identified down the road of need for security. In terms of items 71, 72, 73, 74, well, actually, 71 to 75, that's the, that's VAT flooring. I would assume that those, that's the asbestos flooring in the elementary schools?
Yes.
I would assume that they're just that far down the list because we're basically either taking all of the ones or all of the twos, and that, because I was a little concerned that that was, those were items listed as 71 to 75, and I think that's a major priority. But I would assume, again, that the vote for the board will be all of ones or not, not segmenting. But I just, I noticed that they were quite far down the list of number ones. And then lastly, the playground equipment out there, 95 to 97. And I've raised this before, that I know that Elsmer has fundraised it at the, in the third community forum, Glenmont said that they were willing to fundraise, but the cost, we've gone now to three playgrounds. With the soft costs added in, it's half a million dollars. So I'm just noting that I think those, those amounts could be, I know you're working with the PTAs, we would look, I would look for those to be adjusted based on the donations that the playgrounds, the PTAs might be willing to make. Because if we're putting that much into playgrounds, but only 175 into security, I think that's, that's of concern to me. But that's it for my questions.
I have one question. Greg, the item number nine, the stone repairs at the middle school, is that the front facade? Which is in the black netting now and all? Or where?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was up in the top.
I actually have a question on 26 and 27, the internal security cameras at the high school. Do you have any sense of where those might be placed?
There's a whole process that we would get involved with as we look to design a system. We would involve administrators, the principals, you know, where are hotspots, where have we had issues of either vandalism, fights, any concerns that they may have and adjust, and place them accordingly, where they have their monitors, where they don't have their monitors. So no, we haven't, that's a ballpark figure. We have not designed the project yet.
Okay. And any sense of how many cameras that amount of money would pay for, or roughly, or do you have a sense?
Yeah? Thirty?
Up to 30 or so?
I think I.
Yeah, it's between 25 and 30 cameras.
We, when we looked at this a while ago, I don't know why 37 is coming to mind for me.
Okay. So if you were to work with administration and decide that perhaps fewer cameras were needed, maybe they just didn't want them in so many spots, that cost would come down because we would be using fewer cameras.
I mean, there's all different types of cameras. There are ones that, that give you panoramic, that move, that are motion activated, depending upon what we have outside. There's low resolution, high resolution infrared. It's just amazing, it's, it's, we have a lot of options here.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I would just suggest that we look at the high resolution cameras, because I know at my own office building, we have very low-res cameras outside our building, and somebody stole a snow blower and whatever, and the picture was useless in identifying the person and the license plate of their car.
Actually, I do have another question. And I'm not sure anyone here could answer that. Is the, the current football field area, is that locked at all any time, or is it open access?
Open access.
Because I know I see walkers and people there in the evening. If there was a synthetic turf field there, would it be fully open, would it be full open access 24 hours a day?
Well, we've talked to other school districts with turf, and you do need some type of security on it. I know Schenectady, I think they have security cameras on their field and they lock their field down.
Okay.
Okay, so, I mean, we haven't discussed this at all yet, but we just need to preserve that investment if that's what.
Yeah, but if you lock it, then you're not allowing the community to use it at all the other times, which it has become a community resource now.
Oh, well, they use other fields, or they, again, this is something that we'd have to talk about.
My question was more if we would need, because someone told me that those back soccer fields that were put in the last bond, that the fence is at a height in which that, as such, folks can get over it, even if it was locked. So I wasn't sure if they, we would need a different fence system than was currently in place.
No, we're, we're pretty much wrapped around the track field, and we primarily did that for crowd control during our large football games. But none of our fields are secure in any way. We just have four-foot-high fences over near my facility and the new fields. That's, you know, that was meant for just so people wouldn't, you know, take a vehicle on, on the field.
Yeah, one of the things I would add, I think, Laura, you pose, you pose a good question. I know several fields that I've either visited over my career and stuff, a lot of them tend to be open fields, but you have a restricting device that allows one body to pass through, sort of like they have it, like the Syracuse Dome and so forth, so that people can get in, access the field and so forth, but you'd still want to maintain some, some type of security visual of the field as a record, as well to deter any type of potential issues that could go with an unsupervised situation. But I think one of the added advantages, if you ever did something like this, is the amount, that was one of the things I've noticed since I've moved here, is that that track is used by the community tremendously, and something like this, and what the board has always talked about, is we want to make sure that we are very community-centric on this.
Actually, that point, didn't someone come in with a snow blower to the track? I mean, that could cause.
Yeah, it was the, it was the winter after we installed the track. It was brand new, and there was somebody that during the wintertime plowed around the entire track because they wanted to walk during the wintertimes. So probably not the best thing for the rubber surface. We did add, one thing I did forget, we did add another column here, EPC, Energy Performance Contracting, that we, we've talked about, we identified what projects conservatively we feel might be picked up if the board considers an EPC contract, and I think that totals about $3 million.
Greg, do you know what the total for security is in here? I mean, people are very mindful of security since, you know, the last shooting in Connecticut, and I know you put in the extra for the enhancements, the blue line there for entrances to the elementary schools, but also the cameras would be part of that too, but altogether.
Yeah, I, we didn't separate what we would consider security, you know, increasing, changing out some hardware to some of the doors might be considered security. At a number of schools, we are changing out glass in classrooms to, to sheet rock from a fire standpoint and also from a security standpoint, so I did not total all that up, but we could very easily.
Anyone else?
The internal cameras are not intended for safety, correct? They're, they're more to watch the students.
Well, I don't think it's our intent to have somebody monitoring a screen. I think it's more of a deterrent. I know just from my conversations with administrators that they spend a tremendous amount of time interviewing students to determine who threw the first punch, or who was bullying who. So I think the intent is more the ability to review of tape after an issue has, has happened, to see if they can decipher what's happened. If that answers your question.
But you could monitor, right? There'd be like TVs where they could monitor what's going on at any given time?
No.
No.
Well, someone has to sit there and watch.
No, they're not going to be connected to a TV.
Yes, I mean, these are computer-based, so depending upon, again, whatever system we design, if we want the resource officer to be able to access any camera, or remotely superintendent's office, whoever, you know, we can.
I don't want it.
You know, we can design that accordingly, and if we do want somebody to watch, you know, that can happen as well.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, if you could go to the.
Do you want me to go over that? Knowing that there are eight pages of options included on here, the intent of this sheet is to try to break it down into examples of what various types of decisions the board might make as we go through this process. How might those translate into additional cost impacts on tax bills for the community? The first column on this sheet is what we're calling the everything column. That, you'll note, has a grand total of 29.8 million, which ties into the detail on this particular sheet. So every single project, priority ones, twos, and threes, all of the field options, both improving the drainage on the existing Van Dyke field, as well as synthetic turf, and all of the projects, even if they are EPC-eligible, is included in there. Using the assumptions that we've talked about throughout this process on what is the percentage of aid that we could expect to receive from the state, what would be the financing of that, the net impact is what is shown on the two lines below. So for a $250,000 home, if the board approved everything, the cost would be just under $70 per year to the taxpayers. We broke that down as well into what would it be for a $100,000 home, and that is just under $28 to, per $100,000 of taxable assessments. The columns then, to the right, show various ways to reduce certain elements of what would be included on that. So the second column is what would that grand total be if we pulled off the projects that are likely to be eligible for an energy performance contract? So that total is about $3.1 million, as we had reviewed at prior meetings. Pulling those projects out into an EPC is a way to still get the work done, but to take advantage of alternate funding streams, so that the net impact to the taxpayers are zero. So in that particular instance, it drops the total cost down to about $26.7 million, and the cost per 100,000 would be just under $25, or about $62 for a $250,000 home. The next example of a possible combination is if we take all of the priority one items and all of the priority two items, if we include as a priority one, the enhancements to the natural turf field on the Van Dyke fields, that's the 1.88 line that's broken out. If you factor that in, if you include a track, a synthetic track as well, and then also back out the EPC, that drops you down to the 26, or I'm sorry, the 25.5 cost, ranging from about $60 more for a $250,000 home, or about $24 per 100,000. You can see that these are in descending order. The next column is where we have said, okay, let's take the priority ones, including the enhancements to the natural turf field of the 1.88 million. Let us include the synthetic turf option in there. Let us only look at the top priority two items, and that total is about the $2.3 million, and then back out those EPC. Those EPC reductions are all for priority one items, even though that's not specified on the sheet, and that drops you down to about $23.5 million for a total project size. Again, about $55 for a house assessed at 250,000, or about $22 per 100,000. We could opt to go to a lower total than that. The next column does not include synthetic turf as an option at all. It is mainly taking the enhancements to the existing field, putting in all of the priority two line items, and then backing out the EPCs. That would drop you to about 22. you to about $22.3 million, or about $52 for a $250,000 home. And then the last example that we're showing, $21 per 100,000. The last example would be to include the priority ones, the top twos, and then exclude the EPC costs. And that would give you a lower of the scenarios of about $20.3 million, $48 for a $250,000 home, or about $19 per 100,000. So again, there are multiple ways that we can carve up various subcomponents off of this total list. And this is just to show you what those impacts might be if you exercise those various options.
Any questions for Judy?
Uh, one question.
Let the board members do it first, please.
And Judy, that was, again, at the 5% rate, but they're all lower if we were to show the...
Do you want to do the...
Do you want to show the 4%? I also, because we have, because interest rates fluctuate, initially we had used 5% to show a very conservative cost estimate. If we were to go to market today, we would probably be looking at an interest rate in the 3.5 to maybe 4% interest rate. So if we had a 4% interest rate on this financing, you can see that the numbers dropped down somewhat, and that's all as a result of the lower interest costs. So whereas the 5% rate would be about $70 for everything, you can see it would lower it down to about $63 per $250,000 home. These numbers are similarly reduced for all the various options. If you go all the way over to the lowest option, which was the priority ones and top twos less the EPCs, it goes down to a low of about $43 for a $250,000 home. So this just gives you an idea of the potential range that we could see, depending on what the market conditions are when we actually go to the bond market.
Okay. Any other board members have questions? Anybody from...
Judy, can you explain the bottom of the thing from the question I asked last?
Oh, yes, thank you. The question that we had talked about is what does the base budget tax rate mean to the citizens as well, recognizing that if these additional projects were approved, it would be on top of that base budget cost. Right now, the 2012 tax rate per thousand for Bethlehem taxpayers is about $20.90 per thousand. So for each 1% increase in the levy, that's a 21-cent tax rate increase. So if you apply that to a $250,000 home, that would be an increase of about $52 on their tax bill for just the base budget, not including the capital projects that might be approved by the board and the community. For a cost per $100,000, it's just under $21.
For 1% increase in the tax...
Per 1% increase in the levy, yes.
Okay. Any other board members?
I guess I'd ask, you know, you've got the different options there of, you know, priority ones and twos, you know, where you start out with everything. And Greg, do you think we can do without the threes? And what impact does that have on us?
And come use the mic.
I guess as far as impacts, I think we'd have to be specific and look at the line, each, each line item as far as the threes go. If you go down and you look at the threes, a lot of them are cosmetic items that if we don't do now, it's not going to hurt us down the road. I think painting, you know, just as an example, we can still hold class. You know, we, we wash the walls. Do they look all fresh and painted? No. Is that something that we could do without if, if we're looking to start cutting? Yes. And that's why if you see a lot of the, the priority threes are, are those aesthetic type of items.
If I could, Mr. Downey, Dan, as you look at the item number threes from like, say, the BCS standpoint, would you concur with that pretty much assessment at this point?
Yes. And also, as I was just glancing down them as well, you see some of the, the building numbers, nine, 10, and 11 are non-student occupied buildings. So in terms of, as we, as Greg and I have gone through this several iterations, trying to get all the, all the items that really need attention is twos and ones. So these threes can, I don't, I don't want to say that they, you know, we can get to them later and that they'll be okay, but right now they're not broken or causing a hazard. So that's why, like, I know Charmaine had mentioned that the VAT that we have listed is down to in the 70s because a lot of it is really good. It's, it's stuck onto the floor, it's not coming up. So, and it's, it was meant to do that, 70 years old, still there. So these, these items, yes, like Greg said, some of them are cosmetic, some of them, they're just not broken, but we want to look at them in the, in the coming years.
Judy, can I ask you, is there any advantage or, I don't know if advantage is the correct word, but to possibly not doing as big a bond now and instead doing a smaller bond, and then in a couple of years, doing another bond? Or, you know, is there an advantage or what are the disadvantages or advantages to doing everything all at once or spreading it out over a few years?
One of the things that we had talked about would be if we were to structure a capital program that would be the most effective for the district, it would be to kind of right-size those projects so that we would have a certain amount of work that would be done on a more frequent cycle. So as opposed to, like, the very first facility forum, we talked about, one of your options is to do a very large bond on a very infrequent basis. Or you could do smaller bonds, two, three, $4 million on a three- or four-year cycle as well. So that's something that we would be looking at. We don't know what that amount is yet going forward, because part of that is dependent on how much work do we opt to do at this time. So we've come to the point where we have items that really do need the attention and the investment. So depending on how much we do now, will, if we do the vast majority of it, we would have that option to do lesser amounts in those out years.
But is there some, something to do with the financial stability of the district if we continue to do bonds at different times, as opposed to doing one now and then waiting 10 years and doing another big one or something like that? Is there any advantage or help to the budget process or the financial stability of...
Ideally, the way you structure your debt is so that you do have stability in your overall debt service. To the extent you have stability, it helps you avoid any fluctuations in your budget impacts and ultimately in the tax rates that are paid by the citizens. So the benefit is that by having a regular maintenance plan where you're doing, say, $3 million every few years, as you're issuing that new debt, you have older debt that's coming off. So that really helps you get to a more stable position with your overall debt service for the district.
Thank you.
I would also just caution that the state aid may not be there in the future.
Right, we have no idea.
The wild card that we live with.
I heard the state ed has recommended that that's being removed from the formula, at least the way it is structured now, which has to be a plus.
Right.
So I am concerned about that.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's one of the highly unknowns. If, say, the district did not do something now and what state ed is requesting and changing the building aid formula, it could potentially cost the district a significant amount more in the future if we are unable to take advantage of the building aid.
I, I went back and I looked at the survey and at the forums, specifically Forum Two, and unfortunately, we didn't ask people what they thought of a bond for more than $15 million. But of the seven groups, and one of them was online, most said $10 million, or some said between 10 and 15, depending what's on it, with the concern saying if we didn't go towards $15 million, what would we give up if we didn't go to the higher point? But unfortunately, we never asked people, what about 20 or 25 million? But, so. And, and that data was, is based on previous, what we've presented to the public previously, and it was in October, but it seemed like people were centered on around 10 to 15 million at the, at that time.
Any other board members before we get into our discussion? All right, anybody from the, have questions for Judy? Okay.
I have a lot of questions. Do you want to talk about it now or do you want to talk about it later?
Questions for like, for Judy to answer about the finances?
The finances, the whole thing?
I was just going to be letting you start.
Just, if you want to, just give a couple of them, sure.
I can wait until time for the public to clock. I'll wait a minute.
Okay. But is it gonna...
Questions for the architect.
Okay.
I'm not sure this gentleman understood the public comment period.
Was before, yeah.
Before.
Yeah, we did in the very beginning. I asked for public comment on an agenda item, so if...
Why didn't, that was on the agenda that we were going to talk about in this project?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, it was on it as far as facilities, because that's what we've been doing for the...
I'm looking at the agenda. Why didn't you say anything about the bond issue?
Okay. You know what, and it's kind of, just kind of put in there as facilities because that's what we've been working on, but maybe next time we need to make that more clear.
Don't talk about the bond issue now, I'll talk later.
Yep, go, go ahead. Just state your name for the camera and stuff, please.
Norman Moran. I live at 52 Cars They Drive in Slingelands. And I've been on, I've been a member of this community for 35 years. And I went to a original board meeting, our meeting, Charmaine was there, I was with her, and when we started talking about a bond issue here, we're talking 10 to 15 million. Now we're talking twice as much or three times as much, you know? And, and last bond issue you had, 2003, ended up going from 92 to 97 million. They built schools they didn't need. They put a couple millions, at least a few million dollars in Clarksville, which they now is not used by the school district or anything else. So I have no confidence in the board at all. Some people will say, well, I wasn't on the board at that time. Well, that was a board action, whether or not they were on the board or not. So I have no confidence whatsoever in the board. And your, the original bond issue was 92 million. Excel added another 5 million, so it came out to be 97 million. We owe 73 million, $455, right now on that bond issue. And now you're talking about another $30 million bond issue? You're totally out of control. You're not up to what really is going on in the world. My school, I just got my taxes for the county, everybody else, the county is in town, and those are up. And, and it keeps going up and up and up. You're talking about a bond issue here, but at the same time, your, your other costs are going to go up. You're going to have an increase in the buy, in the school taxes come, you know, this year, and it goes on and on and on. And you talk about the track conditions. I read here where the, I guess it's a track coach talked about, he got kids with splints and stress fractures. I'm sure we got a medical doctor, either one of these, I don't know whether medical doctors or, oh, she's a medical doctor. Okay. And you start out, kids keep growing up until they're 18 years old. I mean, you don't grow from this size to that size, you go gradually. And during that period of time, if your body is going to grow in size, your chances of getting fractures are much greater. Isn't that right?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, when you talk, I think sometimes you've got children, boys, girls, playing sports, that their bodies aren't up to that point where they should be involved in certain sports. So we should go ahead and spend all kinds of money to provide for those few people? In fact, the sports in this program, in this school is getting out of total control. The expenditures, including transportation, is $613,000. And I hear people talk, oh, we've had to lay off teachers' age, and we had to do this, and we had to do that. But we could spend $613 million, $613,000 on sports. Well, I went to school, there was reading, writing, arithmetic, there was baseball, football, and basketball. Football and baseball were played on the same fields. Here, we've got to have different fields for this. We've got soccer fields, we've got baseball fields, we've got soccer fields, God only knows what other fields we've got. And everybody wants more and more sports. Well, are we educating sports? Are we educating people to make a living in the future? And I think putting this kind of a cost on the people in this community that are up in age, senior citizens, people are moving out of this area. I'm not going to move out of this area, not going to force me out of my house for 30, that I've been in for 35 years, okay? And you've got to somehow or other control your costs. You can't give everybody everything they want. The next thing you know, you're going to have a sports skydiving or something? Now, as far as the architectural engineers, how firm are those prices or the estimates?
Right now, they're estimated.
Estimates, okay. And, and you've got to figure, all this work that's going to be done, it's going to be done by labor union people. Because of state of New York, everybody must belong to the union. They could get jobs done probably for 50% less if you didn't go through the unions. But you can't do that in New York State. So this is just an estimated basis, $28,000, $28 million estimated. It could end up being 40 million, depending upon what the, what the labor unions do in the future. You know, I, I think there's a lot that you people ought to consider before you start going to have a lot of projects. I think there are things in here that actually had to be done, and those are the things you ought to do. But there's a lot of things that I can see in here, now that I've seen breakdown on, that doesn't need to be done. So anybody got any questions on me? And that bond issue originally was going to be 10 to 15 million, right? That was an estimate. You were sitting there with me.
From, from two years, you said the cost of two years ago.
And now it's three times as much or twice as much, depending upon which...
One of the things, if I can, for the board is the number that you're talking about, which I was there as well, 10 to 15 million, I think it was at the top, I think it was 15, too. But one of the things that that number did not have included in it, but was included in the sheets that everybody was given, was the fact that it would have at least 25% or more soft cost. So that 15 million with soft cost that was presented would be around the numbers that we are looking at here, except for the inflationary costs that happened because that was, the, the pricing that you were seeing were prices from 2010. The prices that the architect now are estimating are prices considered for 2014, which would be the building time. They should not escalate to the numbers that you were saying, 40 million. There could be some escalation in their, their estimates, which are industry standards, or there should, there could be potentially some decreases depending on the bidding climate, and hopefully we find a favorable one if we go forward.
But again, you're talking labor, union labor, and they, and that cost goes up. There's no, nothing to stop them, okay? Because they don't have the competition.
We wouldn't go more than what the bond was approved at.
Yeah, no matter what, the, the district could not go. If a bond was put forth and approved, that would be the number, no matter what. And if the number exceeded, the amount of work exceeded that number, we'd have to pare back some of that work, which I do believe happened in the bond that you were referencing with the 93 and 97.
Well, I guess the thing that bothers me is taxpayers approved the $92 million bond issue in 2003, and then Excel come along, whoever they are, and gave another 5 million.
But that wasn't bonded, I mean, that was, we didn't, that was additional money that came, but, but there was no costs, well, there were some costs, but small costs with that. That, I forget what, that was an addition...
Like 98% debatable or something?
Yeah, it was, it was almost totally debatable. So that was, I mean, the voters...
Yeah, it was, it was almost totally adable, so, that was, I mean, the voters, you know, the citizens voted on it, but it was not a cost-
Excel came in and another five million, but that made it 97 million dollars that the taxpayers in this community are responsible for. It wasn't like the five million dollars was a gift here.
Well, but then with the aid, it would have been the 45 or 46 million plus the additional five million, I think, so it would have been at least 50 million that was the aid, you know, that we've received back.
See, my, my problem is this, the board, I believe, don't represent the taxpayers. I think they represent the student body. And I'll bet you the majority of these people on the board are ex-PTA, or, or, they're endorsed by the PTA Association. And so the PTA Association runs it, and that's all they think about, is my, my Mary and my John. Well, that's not the only thing you people ought to be interested in. You ought to be interested in controlling cost to the taxpayer. But it seems to be a one-way street. It always seems that, oh, whatever they want for trash, or they want for this, that, or anything, oh, that's all approved, that's good, oh, yes, for the kids. No mention of what it does for the taxpayers. You people ought to take responsibility for the taxpayers, too, and not only for students. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as, I'm not sure, I know Lynn was trying to get to this, but the adable money is if we get 70% back. So just to round things off, if you had a 30 million dollar bond, and you get 70% back, we would be paying like 900,000, or 9 million?
No, I really don't think what the state of New York says, because the state of New York keeps reducing the amount they give to schools.
Right, and I, and I know that-
So you've got to remember that, whatever the cost is, if it's like 20, 30,000, 30 million dollars, that cost, even though the states said they're going to pick up a portion of it, doesn't. You know, like the state of New York, where the people realize that they're not, they've, they've, you know, 62 new more authorities. Those authorities have bonding response, they can bond and everything else. Cuomo gets up there and says, I've got a 3 million dollar deficit, 3 billion, I should say, and all of a sudden, there's no increase in taxes here. Where did that 3 billion dollar deficit go? And where did these various authorities that you set up? And, and eventually, all that's going to have to be paid. But the school districts are one of the people that are suffering.
And, and if I could, if I could clarify, Mr. Moran, I, I think one of the important things you said is there was a 3 billion dollar deficit. Mr. Cuomo, whether he created other things or not, balanced that 3 billion dollar deficit. How did he do it, was your question? He did it through education withdrawal of funding, and he used that money, however, but that's how he balanced that 3 billion dollars, along with Medicaid and Medicare for the states. However, what I think Ms. Stevers was trying to say is a portion of it will come from the local tax base, no matter what, depending on how the bond is positioned. But a larger portion in this situation helps to improve the, the out, the infrastructure of the district, while improving the value of the whole community as well. I, in other words, the board is trying to struggle with finances. They always have throughout this whole picture. And they will work for not only the taxpayers, but the entire community. That's what their, their job is, and one of the things that we have to do, just like we, we'd said with your house, if your roof is, is broken, you have to fix it. There are some wants, and there are some needs in this package, definitely. And that's one of the discussions the board's been having over the past three to four months, listening to the community, also listening to their constituents, as well as listening to the members that have come, just like you have tonight. And that's, that's a good thing. That's the best you can ask for a board that I've ever worked with. But, it still comes to a decision. We still have to move forward as a district, even in light of some of the financial travails that we've had from the state, as well as the financial reality of the recession. But in order to get out of it, we also have to improve and make sure we are addressing the things that we need to address, and sometimes there are some issues that are wants. Those are things that the community will decide. The board here will only put forth a recommendation to the community. Ultimately, the community is the only voice that finally has the last say, no matter what's done, whether it's our budget or bond. So I hope you understand that this board is doing its due diligence for everybody in the community, and ultimately, you as a community member, along with every other community member, will have a final say.
You know, you think people have a, have a say in what goes on with the budgets every year? That's a, that's a farce. Years ago, the only people that voted on the school budget were people that owned homes. Then they turned around and they said, oh, if you're renting property in the school district, you have to vote on the budget. Now they turn around and say, anybody over 18 years of age can vote on the school budget. And anybody 18 years old have no financial responsibility. So they can come in and vote on a school budget, because the teachers tell them, well, if you don't vote on the school budget, Johnny isn't going to have erasers on his pencils. So the kids go out and vote for the budget. So the average person at the senior doesn't really have much to say with it. And I would bet that during any budget approval basis, when they vote on the budget, the seniors come in early as day. I think if you took tally on what the goal control was at that time, you'd probably find out the school budget went down. But then you come after school, you see all the parents come in with their 18-year-olds and stuff like that, and if you looked at that point, or if you find the budget passes.
That is the community.
Yeah, because it's a very squatted, it gives no benefit at all. Why should I continue to pay taxes at my age? The school district, I never had children in this school district, so I'm not paying for somebody else because somebody else paid for my kids. I never had kids in schools. I have four kids, two are in eighth grade, and two of them want to tell their story.
Thank you for your comments and everything.
You're welcome.
Was there somebody else that wanted to say something? Ask a question? Go ahead.
Is that a quick question regarding the gym?
If you could, just come up here and state your name for us, please.
Yes, my name is Kevin Flynn, and I just had a quick question regarding the gym B floor. I, I was reading in the report and everything that we were planning on redoing the bleachers and the ceiling, if I am correct? But I was also, I just wanted to throw out the idea of possibly refinishing the floor. My brother plays basketball on that floor with many different clubs, and he has told me that the floor is very slippery, for lack of a better term, and that it should be either just refinished, as they do at the Y on a yearly basis. And I said, oh, why does that occur? He's like, excuse me, then he replied, mostly because people in PE classes and whatnot go in with just street shoes, and it brings a lot of dust and everything. And while sweeping it does help, it just accumulates over time, and a refinishing is just required, so, I just wanted to bring it up.
Is, is that on there, Greg? I thought I saw that, refinishing of the floors.
I thought I saw it of all the other gyms.
It's hard to tell. And then sometimes, I think just O and M does it, right? That doesn't have to be on this, that you try and do those every year?
When, when funded, we actually go through and redo, we go through the sanding of it. We've actually worked quite a bit with PE staff, because going in and out of gyms, it does break some sand, wears down the finishing more. And actually, particularly in competition, they're making a special finish to, to like a squeaky secret type of sound.
I, I thought maybe a year or two ago, I don't know, the basketball club, I thought, made a donation to refinish that floor, no?
Middle school.
Middle school, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, we do have as items 109 and 110 to sand and refinish gym A floor and the upper gym floor of the high school. Gym A is the-
Gym is, that's across from the auditorium, that's a different one, Jim. Yeah. Gym B is the-
But if it's not on there, that can be part of the regular budget?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, how do you guys want to tackle this? Do you want to tackle with the proposition first of how we're going to put it up? Or do you want to go through priorities and see if we're going to take like one, or what we're going to cut? Any?
Dan, if I could, I'd like to bring up one issue to discuss first, and that is the, a couple of people had questions already about it, but the internal security cameras. I would like to ask the board to consider to remove those from the list entirely. Just the internal ones, not the external. I, I do not agree with putting internal cameras in the schools. In the proposal right now, they're to be put in the high school and the middle school. I don't think they should be in either of them. You know, there's talk that it can be a deterrent, yet from what I've read, and I have done a bunch of reading recently on this, there's as many studies that show it does deter it as it doesn't. And even though all the experts are saying they can't say conclusively that it deters any crimes, and, and I think as we all know, if kids want to do something, they're just going to find out where the cameras are, and they're going to go somewhere else. You know, it's, it's, I don't think it's really going to do anything. The other, a couple other issues, one, it's a, it's, it's not preventing anything, it's really an after-the-fact thing, because the way they've been proposed to us was that nobody would be watching them. And I certainly don't want to pay another staff person to be watching cameras all day, I can tell you that. So the fact is, if they hear that something happened in some hall sometime, then they'll go back and look at the film. So it's not going to prevent any crimes, and we even got a memo from administration, and if you summarized what they said, really, it's to make their job easier. And I'm sorry, I don't feel like we need to put in security cameras. I think there's a handful of kids that they, the administration knows who the kids are that are doing these bad things, and we should be harsh on those kids. They should be watching those kids, they should be doing something to monitor those kids, as opposed to spreading incredible mistrust across the entire student body, where most of the student body is not doing anything wrong. They're, and in a lot of the studies, it shows that the morale of the students goes down, there often is mistrust between the students and administration, once you put in the cameras. I, I think it's sending the kids the wrong message, telling them that they're bad kids, that we don't trust them. And I, I just, I think it's the wrong way to go. The other thing is, in our teacher contract, there is time for teachers to do supervision around in the halls, and we don't enforce that as much, in my understanding, anyway, that we could have more teachers out in the halls at different times. And I would much rather a teacher come across some kids who are doing something, rather than having it being filmed that someone might look at later. So I think there are other ways to do this. I also, as I said, think that the administration knows who these kids are, that they want to be watching, and I think there's other ways to watch them. I think also, like, in, we always talk about, if you raise expectations of kids, academically, they will meet the expectations. If you lower them, they're just going to do as much as they have to. Well, I think the same thing goes with this. If you tell the kids they're bad kids, you know, they're, they, they could be encouraging them to do other things, see what they can get away with, or anything like that. I think we need to say, we trust you guys, we trust you to respect each other, we trust you to watch out, we trust you to help make this a good school. I don't think we need to be putting cameras in. And as I said, the studies do not show that it's going to help. It's an after-the-fact thing to make the administrators' jobs easier. I don't think it's going to do anything to prevent crimes, the kids will find places where there are no cameras, and I don't have a problem with them outside, I just think inside, it, it's sending the wrong message to the kids. I think it can cause mistrust between the administration kids, and I think it's a really bad idea. And I'd like to have them removed completely from the list.
I appreciate Laura's points, but I, I do have to disagree, not because we don't trust the students, but we are responsible for their safety, not only between themselves, but from community members who may get into the building, and if there's a fire or something. Where, I don't think the intent is to put in the cameras to punish the students, it's to protect them. And just to give an example, somebody I know who teaches in a school, an intruder got into the building, and the only way they were able to find out where this person was lurking was by going to the video cam, the video display, and watching it, and they happened to see this person darting in a, in a fairly concealed area. I think our kids, by and large, are very well behaved, and I don't think there's, they have anything to worry about. But when something does happen in a school, it helps the administration, it helps the teachers, if they can look at the video and see what actually happened, rather than all these, you know, point-of-view stories they may be getting from students who were in that area. It's just another resource that we can use to protect not only the students, but our teachers and the staff.
I don't think it's protecting any.
Same has been true on school buses, too. You know, preventing accidents from occurring by having the cameras on the buses and, and being able to determine when kids are acting inappropriately, that, you know, the issues could be resolved by looking at, you know, looking at the camera afterwards, because sometimes the bus driver is trying to keep his eyes or her eyes on the road, as opposed to seeing all that's going on behind them.
I'm not finding them in the school buses, the school buses already have them.
But it's the same type of thing, it's the same, it's for the same reason.
I think it's sending the wrong message, I don't, we haven't even asked the student body, how would they feel about it? I think, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's sending the wrong message. I don't think it would help, I really don't. We're talking about enhancing the security of the entries to our buildings. Once you do that, the example you gave, hopefully would not happen. Plus, you can't put up for every contingency. If these kids wanted, you know, we're talking about the kids already in the building. This is an after-the-fact thing, it's not going to prevent any of the issues that are happening while they're happening.
I think it could help prevent future. If someone is being bullied, and is afraid to speak out that something's happening, but they were able to view it on a camera that this particular situation is happening, it would protect the kids that may be being bullied and don't want to speak up. I, I think it, after-the-fact, it can be a helpful tool for the administration to deal with issues.
We're not talking about privacy areas like restrooms or locker rooms, right? I mean, there wouldn't be any cameras in those areas.
You're prohibited.
Right, prohibited, so, I mean, you're talking about public areas that, and, you know, even the teachers that are doing that as a supervisory period of work, I mean, they usually sit at a desk and watch the hallway for students, or whatever. I'm not sure that totally covers every area of the-
Well, neither's the camera, they talked about the cameras.
But it, but they're working in conjunction with each other.
Well, they talked about the cameras aren't going to be everywhere. I mean, they're going to move them around, they're going to be surprised, you know? So if you happen to have a camera, where are the kids doing the thing that they want to watch two days later? You know, luck, luck could be on your side, it might not be.
I have a question. We did, we saw a memo from some middle school administrators, but do you have any, I, I don't know if there's any high school-
That was, that was a joint memo.
Oh, it was joint, okay. It, it would be helpful for me, because I haven't formed an opinion on this either way, I would, I, I'm more of the person that likes to kind of sit, and you know, I take everything and look at it, and come back next week or so. To ha, I don't know if it's fair to ask them to come and just talk with us about how the, the cultures might use it, the deans might use it.
That's what the memo did.
I know, but it's just a memo, it just, it says, and they'll make, you know, we, I'd like more information, so I don't know if there's, if we need to have, make a decision tonight on this, given the other kinds of decisions you're looking for, but, I mean, that's one of the questions, is do we have to decide this tonight?
I, I think it'd be good if we could decide it tonight, I think we just need to kind of pull the board and see, you know, who wants them and who doesn't.
I agree with Laura. I, I think there's more negative than positive to it, and it's, I don't think it's a safety issue at all, no one's watching them. It's strictly to catch kids doing things, and you could have a, you could have a camera on you 24 hours a day to watch everything that's happening. I mean, it's not, it's not a good thing, it's not the real world, and I don't think they're necessary either, at all.
Tom, are you familiar with schools that do have cameras and how they use them? Any, any information, I know you said you did some research, but are you familiar with any other school districts in New York that have them, and how it's worked or not worked?
Well, e- each of the school districts I've worked with have them. Some of them did not have them, when I started working there, they developed into them. When I was high school principal, we did not have them, we developed into them through a bond. It wasn't easy for us to just pick up and move them from one place, once they, once you usually set out, either through the architects, or a technology advisor, or plan on sort of the visual line of sites in some of your main areas. Like, I know for us, we had a rather large school, we were having particularly problems with fire alarm poles in the middle of winter and so forth, in the- in the, sort of the snow belt area that can be quite hazardous because you can't go back into the building, no matter, even if you know it's just a pole. But by locating them so that you get visual line of sight, that allowed that to basically become nonexistent, like 911 calls and so forth. It, it depends. I mean, what it does, I think Laura's statement on the, the administrators, it will, it will make their job easier. I don't, I would preface that with, it makes investigations easier instead of trying to pull different individuals down into a room and get the information that's needed. With DASA, that's a new requirement. I didn't have to operate under DASA. Now, DASA, you do. And it's the district's responsibility to ensure the safety. It's no longer the student's responsibility not to cause something to happen. In each of those situations, most of the legal, legal advisors would say it's paramount for schools to minimize their liability. It has its pros, it has its cons. It depends on how you use them. I believe that Laura is correct. If you use it just for a gotcha moment, that does nothing for student morale. But if students know that you use it to help either verify or quantify their stories or to try to keep them out of the limelight as being one of the reporters, they also value them. So, I, I think it's just like, it's sort of like the turf. It's 50/50 either way, no matter what. There's no one concrete way or the other. It's just, you're, you're looking at what your problems are and how you use them to defer from those problems or liabilities.
Well, and the articles say that if you were to consider putting them in, you should do it with parents and kids and administrators. You shouldn't just make the decision, "Yep, we're going to put in internal security cameras." It should be a process that's done. Because then there's also the questions, who's looking at those? If our SRO is looking at them, does that mean the police department gets it? Then it becomes a criminal offense if the kid's doing something. You've got all kinds of legal issues. If they're on tape and an SRO, who is part of the police department, looking at it. Things that you may have want to kept in the building as a discipline within the building suddenly becomes a criminal act. And the kid has a, a fence on them in the criminal system. I mean, there's lots of issues to just say, "Yep, let's put in security cameras." That these are going to solve some problems. You can't do that.
Yeah. The SRO issue is certainly can be a challenge. The rules on the SRO is that they have great latitude of not doing the negative side because that's not the purpose of any state resource program for school resource officer because they're, to help to bridge the gap, not necessarily be the, how you saw, be all, end all penality part of the situation. Because that really just means police in school instead of a resource officer. I think the school has a lot more say over that than the police do, even on our premises. Because remember, we still have FERPA that is still part of that rule, even with the information that we have. Unless a heinous criminal act took place, which hopefully we don't have, but you can never guarantee.
I just think there's an awful lot more to just putting up security cameras that nobody's really thought through the whole process and what would happen with them. And really, would they be doing whatever you want them to be doing? And to just have them on this list saying, "Yep, we're going to put in security cameras," I think is, is irresponsible of us. And, and I, well, I totally disagree with it anyway. But I don't think that it should be on the list as a done deal. Yep, we're putting in security cameras. I think it's been done the wrong process. And I don't think it's been thought through exactly how they would work, who would have access, how would that, you know, what they'd be used for.
Jody, you've been down the principal here and then another district. What are your feelings on the security cameras?
Well, in both other districts I were in, we had security cameras. And they were used primarily, you're right, after the fact, when something happened generally. We didn't have a situation where we, there was an intruder in the building. Although, we had a situation here earlier where there was someone in the building who was not supposed to be here, that you could have used the cameras for that. I don't ever feel like they caused, you know, this. It wasn't about kids being bad or not trusting them. I think, you know, the culture of our society in general is wherever you go, there's cameras around. I think people are well aware of that. So, it was generally used when things happen, 911 calls, fire alarm calls. We had some issues where there was some theft happening. So, you could go back and see who was going into a particular area at a certain time. And you have a little more hard, concrete evidence. I agree with Mike, the resolution pieces. It's definitely a huge factor. But I don't think, at least, we never used them as, you know, a gotcha. Or I don't think the kids ever felt that we didn't trust them as a result of it. I think that, you know, this is just, there's cameras in the mall, there's cameras in the banks, there's cameras in the grocery stores. I think that's just unfortunately, kind of where we are in society. I think it definitely can provide some safety for the buildings in general. But it's not going to solve everything, for sure.
Anyone else? Does any of the students have any comments or parents or community members? Just come up and state your name, please.
I can't hear.
You got to come up for us and state your name.
Hi, it's Elani Johnson. I have a question unassociated to the cameras, actually. I was wondering, in item 12, 13, and 48, why are we spending $490,000 on Clarksville Elementary School?
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Could we kind of figure out what we're doing with the cameras first and then move on? That was just a suggestion.
But I think Greg could probably answer that really quickly with the Clarksville.
Um, I think the roof is 23 years old and it's, it's less than 20 years. So, it's in time for repair.
We, we still own the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're still obligated.
So, we're still obligated.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That there, yep?
I'm Kevin Flynn again. And I just wanted to share a quick opinion regarding cameras in school. Personally, I think that they're a great idea, as long as they're used properly. I'm sure I don't speak for the whole student body, and I can't say I do. But overall, I feel like they would really deter a lot of potential crime that could happen in the school. However, I would say, I think 30 or 40 was the number being thrown around for cameras that would be installed. Possibly some fake cameras and switching those cameras around to, you know, even confuse people even more as to which ones were legitimate. And fake cameras would probably cost a lot less than a real camera, I would assume. So, with all of that, I would say it would probably be more efficient because it would seem like this is locked down a bit more. And I'm not too sure about the discussion between, you know, external cameras or not. However, I, I personally do agree. And again, I feel like those would be a good place to also have real ones and fake ones as well. So, just wanted to throw an idea on the table.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moran?
Norman Moran. My wife was a guidance counselor at the high school here. And she died in 1983 from breast cancer. But previous to that, the teachers would monitor halls when they had a, no, when they had a break in the day, we'll say, when they didn't have a class, you know? I don't know what the rules are today, whether the union won't allow them to do that. You know, a few years ago, they had a kid 18 years old and a female that were caught in one of the girls' rooms having sex. Now, putting, you don't put a camera in a, in a girl's room. So, you know, and you got police, a police in the high school, you got a police in the junior high school. And they should be walking around the school and checking on the school. I think the, I don't know what you call now, principals or vice principals of high school, they should be walking around the halls too at certain times of day. And you got other people like guidance counselors that have a break in the day. They could be monitoring, but if it's against the labor or union rules, they don't do that. I don't know. What's, what's the rules today?
They actually do do that.
Pardon me?
They are, they are stationed throughout the, the buildings. I, I've seen them as I'm walking around, as well as all the others do. The guidance counselors, they, they get out as much as they can, but they're usually dealing with student issues.
Okay, then, you've got all these people walking around the buildings. Why do you need, like Laura brought out, why do you need the cameras?
Big school.
And if the kids, and if the kids want to block them, they'll block them. So, you know, you're talking about making an investment of $72,000. So, something that I don't think is necessary. I agree with Laura that I don't think it's necessary.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
I'm Jeff Brown. I teach in a school, actually, right now. And I sometimes do hall duty in the school that has the cameras. You're absolutely right. I think the best deterrent is to have teachers walking those halls and in the cafeteria as well. I was on cafeteria duty, hall duty, everything. However, the, the one problem is where the, the cameras do come in handy. I can have hall duty and I don't know that kid who just gave me the F-bomb. I don't know that kid who just told me to, you, you might be surprised what teachers hear when they're on hall duty because I don't know who these kids are. They don't know who I am necessarily. So, in a situation like that, I can go to the principal and say, "By the way, I was in such and such a hall at such and such a time. Can you tell me who that student was who just gave me the F-bomb so I can write a referral and then they can get whatever consequences result?" Another circumstance happened where we smelled marijuana in a bathroom. And I was on hall duty and I immediately went to check to see what I could find out. And the student was long gone. So, they went and they looked at the camera between such and such a time period to see which student went into that bathroom, which student left. So, yes, it's definitely after the fact, that's true. But it does help my job as a teacher sometimes to, to follow through on the disciplinary referral. And it does help the administrators, I think, to have an extra set of eyes. Because I certainly don't know everybody. Even in the cafeteria, when I was on cafeteria duty with two permanent cafeteria monitors, we could turn our back for a second and there goes food flying across the cafeteria. But there were cameras in there, so we get put into that as well. So, double edged sword. But you're right, the, the best deterrent is to have the teachers walk in those halls. I agree.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Ashley DiMarco. With the issue about the internal cameras, I agree that we should have internal cameras put in. I personally, I remember in ninth grade, taking a survey about safety and how I felt about the school. Looking back, I'm a senior now, I have a completely different outlook. Ninth grade, I was, didn't even think twice about safety. I felt fine at the school. Now, I don't feel fine. And I'm, I'm a big girl. I know I can protect myself, but I don't feel safe at this school. And I know there's, I'm, I was always trying to think of something we could do with all the recent weapons and stuff like that, even not just in our school, but all the other school districts. A lot of people, the kids are carrying different things, weapons and such. I know the issue of it being a public school and the issue of searching someone's property is an issue. But seeing as we can't, without probable cause, I guess, search every student or they're allowed to have backpacks, seeing as we can't, you know, prevent what they're going to bring in their bag, you don't know what they're going to bring. I think investing in cameras would be, if not anything, one good thing that we can do to make some people feel a little safer. I would feel safer. I don't know what we could do, but just having one more thing would, would make a difference for me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, sir? Okay, so, I don't know if you want to, you, you kind of want answers tonight as far as?
As many answers as we can get.
I think, I don't know if you actually had a real motion on there, but you had.
I didn't make a motion, but I didn't, because we don't have a motion on the table concerning the bomb.
Right. Right, because all these are tentative? So, yeah. As far as, I mean, are there enough people that want to take the cameras out? I mean, I know Kate and Laura, Jermaine wasn't sure.
Yeah, if, if we were to take a vote, which I guess I'm not proceeding if you will on, I'd probably abstain just because I don't have enough information. I think it would be worthwhile talking with the student government or whatever. And it's not being wishy washy. I just don't have enough information to go either way. I've heard the arguments. I could be swayed either way. I just don't have a position right now that's fully informed.
Okay. And Mike, you're in favor of home planning?
We had talked about it years ago when we, after Columbine, 1999, and had a district-wide safety committee and safety committees in each of the schools. And we had talked about cameras at the time. But there were so many things we needed to do at that time to improve safety because I guess we never felt like something like that could happen. So, we did invest in other things, but we didn't do the cameras at the time. I think we can do it now. It's a good idea. And if it makes students feel safer, kind of, to me, that is important. Make, have students feel safer in school, then I think that, that it's important to do that.
I'll just say, cameras shouldn't be making the kids feel safer in school. We should have programs that are doing that. And I think we do have programs. And I think then, you know, we should be talking to the administration about what they can do to make the kids feel safer in school. Can't, we shouldn't be relying on cameras to make the kids feel safer in school.
It's just one, one bar.
There are other programs that we should be beefing up than if kids really aren't feeling safe in the schools.
See, what, I'm sorry. You know, one of the ways, things I'm thinking about is the number of cameras. Because I, and I toured around with the dean last year and the, and on his face, the cafeteria wasn't exactly the most orderly place, even though they had several staff members in there. So, one thing that I would listen to is maybe fewer in large public places, like the entryway, like the cafeteria. That's one thing I would think about. So, it's not necessarily no cameras or, or all cameras. It's something, perhaps it's something in between. Again, I, I don't have a fully formed opinion yet.
I would support the cameras. I think the, the administration has put the request in there. And I rely on their, their judgment to say that's what they feel would be beneficial to the, to the district.
And then, I mean, if you asked me this three years ago, I would have probably been against it. But with everything that's going on in the school's safety, I, I would support it also. Especially just hearing the two high school students even support it. I, I thought for sure they would come up and want to take away rights. I liked what Jody said about, you know, they are, they're in banks, they're in post offices, they're all over the place. I mean, everywhere there's something. Even like students have their videos up right on their camera and can take videos. But I do agree that teachers need to, that's where you're going to really get it. But I, I guess I would go with what the administration wanted. They felt there was a need for it. Superintendent and assistant superintendent are for it. So, I think it would probably be a good idea. So, I'd support it.
And we still should be encouraging the staff, like especially middle school and high school, to, I know it's hard sometimes, but in between class periods, to stand out in the hallway just again to monitor what's going on. It's so easy for things to happen just outside the classroom door, even. You know, anything we can do to help make it feel safer to them is important.
But I would always also work with students because I think now, I know I go to the character award breakfasts in my middle school and sometimes it's so and so stepped in when they saw something. I wouldn't want kids to feel like, "Well, I don't have any responsibility to do that anymore because the camera caught it." So, I think it is going to be a, a learning curve if they're in, for students to feel like you still have a responsibility as a citizen to do what you can if you see something that's, and, and it's not going to jeopardize your safety, to not just say, "Well, the camera caught it and I don't need to say, 'Stop pushing Jane right now.'" Or.
No, and I think they're still doing the character ads.
Though at the middle school, they're, they're more focused on students doing some things extra special for somebody else without somebody being watched. I think students should still feel like they have a, a citizen of the school. They have some responsibility to step up if they see something.
And they've been implementing like bullying programs, right? So, to empower students. Okay? So, I think, I mean, it's, I think it stays in because I think we have four. So, I mean, is there, we don't need to make any motions with anything, right? Because all these are tentative until the end.
Yeah.
But as far as our level ones, do we?
All, all the priority ones.
Priority ones, that's what I kind of, that's what I meant. I mean, does everyone want to keep those?
My, my suggestion, you put that, remember that summary sheet you were using for your presentation? It might be helpful.
For ju, ju, sorry.
To put that back up.
There you go.
Because that.
Oh, right. So, kind of work backwards then?
I would probably suggest if we can work backwards from, it, it's hard to sit here and talk and build the project just on a item by item list at this point.
Right.
But where potentially you could be comfortable with some of the suggestions that are up there. And what we use is, we have always used the $100,000 rate. And what we use is we have always used the hundred thousand dollar rate. And that's what we started talking with at the very beginning when the community members came forward. And that's also the same rate that we use regularly with our budget. The two fifty is just what, in general, we started with to use as an average. But what happens is many of our community homes will have to do their own calculation to figure out how it is for them. The hundred thousand allows that calculation to be extrapolated much easier than two fifty. So, what I would ask you to do is try to look at the bottom line that I'm highlighting here as the differences. And it also shows you the differences between one total amount versus another total amount.
Okay. So, we go with the level working from the bottom up and take all the level ones? Do you have to control that?
We don't have just level ones. We can tell you exactly what level ones are with soft costs is about nineteen point two eight two million.
Okay. And then, and then we're going to add that turf into that, right?
Well, depending on what you select with the turf, that would be roughly... Let's go over here. Judy, if you can help me out where I'm finding, the priority ones are in this column along with the turf, less the energy performance contracting. And the only thing extra in here are the level twos.
All of the level twos, yeah.
Okay. I mean, everybody's feeling like they want to include all level ones, right? No, I know, minus the cameras. But minus the cameras, you would support all level ones?
Yeah, but I can't support level ones.
Okay. Charmaine?
Yes, I'm thinking, my thinking is different, but yes, I would support all of level ones.
Lynn? Kate? And Mike? Okay. Matt? All right. So, then we need to go up to where our level twos are.
Judy, is this with the level twos?
With this level twos and this...
Level ones and level twos.
The one point eight eight is the base drainage improvements, which we've deemed to be a priority one. So, looking for affirmation that that would indeed be a priority one. Your priority twos, you have a choice of basically all of the priority twos or what we're calling the top twos. So, it's the four million, two ninety-three is everything versus just the top twos, which is two point three million.
How are people feeling about the level twos?
Well, there's several on here that aren't top priority, I guess you would say, according to the way you described. That we wouldn't need to do, that they're less, that they're less critical at this juncture. So, personally, I would go with the top, you know, the top priority, well, priority ones and the top twos at this point.
Kate?
That's how I feel.
Mike? Charmaine?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Is it because of the cameras?
It's still the cameras, but as far as the twos go, if the cameras...
I'm having also a problem just deciding this. I think, and see, I kind of in my head think of it a different way. I think we need to think about what the community would support as far as the amount and the bond. And so, it might not be that it's all of the top twos or it might not be all of the priority ones. It might be that we have to cut back and it's part of the top twos or something like that. So, I don't, in my mind, I'm not thinking necessarily that, yep, we go with this. I think we also have to think about the amount and what do we want to be doing in the bond. So, I can't tell you that, yes, definitely all of those.
And also, you know, with the energy performance contract, I'm personally feeling very hopeful that more items in, you know, as we go through the process will actually be included, you know, beyond the three point one million. So, that would decrease the total amount of the bond. And, you know, we'd have more in the energy performance contract.
And if we can just talk about that real quick. Right now, this, removing the energy performance contract, which the board can do and automatically do that work, what happens is in order for that to increase from their best guess estimates at this point with what they assume would be EPC reg, EPC eligible, the only way that that would increase off of our list would be if it included probably some roofs that could be factored in once a company does an energy audit. Other than that, they've pretty much identified everything that could be likely EPC that could be safely removed. So, you wouldn't see any growth on that. You might see growth on the EPC in the fact that when they do an energy audit, that could potentially help our budget out down the road by finding other areas where we could do with an EPC that haven't been yet to be identified. That, that, that one process could help us maybe get a roof or something to qualify for there. But right now, it does not.
Nope, I'm just trying to, it sounds like nobody wants to do all the twos, that they're looking at taking some of the twos. Is that correct? Is that how I'm reading the board?
Well, see, I'm thinking like Laura is like the total amount. So, if we were to go with the, one, two, what do we have, how many options are there? One, two, three, four, five, there's six options up there. And so, and the last two, one, it's priority one and two less EPC and then priority ones and the top twos. The field, I think we can discuss, because I know the majority of the members said, yeah. So, what I was thinking of is I like one of the, one of the last two options of a twenty-two million dollar three bond or a twenty million dollar bond.
Which one?
You have to slide the slide that way.
They don't include the turf.
Yeah, yeah, they're there. You know, but the turf could be up as a separate bond. I mean, that, the majority of members voted on that. But what I was, the reason I was thinking this, because I did some analysis before, is we asked on a survey, "How much would you be willing to pay?" Eighteen percent of the people who answered the survey, and granted, there were three hundred and some odd people who did it, said nothing. One to twenty-five was twenty-nine percent. Twenty-eight percent of the people said twenty-six to fifty. So, roughly, I did some quick math, seventy-three percent said fifty dollars or less. And then, when we asked about the amount of the bond on the first, the second forum, seven out of the eight groups said, oh, no, that's something else, sorry, that's another, that's the next discussion. But all the groups said ten to fifty million. Again, we were working different figures. So, that's why I was looking at total amount of the bond or the estimated cost. And so, seventy-three percent of the community said fifty percent or less.
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, yeah, sorry.
And that's on the hundred thousand dollars that question was asked. Was that not...
No, they didn't say what, how, they just said, "How much would you pay?" Because I've got the results. No, it just, I've got this, the summary sheet.
Okay, so that would bring us into the priority one and the top two.
Yes. Or the top, less EPC. Either the top twos or the, with the field being included as a separate bond item.
You've still got to include it in the total cost, though?
Right, but it would be a separate vote.
We don't have that option up there.
Yeah. Well, actually, you actually do have that option up with what Charmaine said. Right now, the option that's highlighted is priority one, top twos, less the EPC and the synthetic field. Total cost would be around, I think it's twenty-three, three.
Twenty-three, three.
Okay. But, twenty-three, five. But what I think, Charmaine, what you were saying is like this column right here is priority ones and top twos less EPC, which is about twenty million. If that's that and what you were saying is the field was separate, that's basically the same thing as this, just in two proposals versus one.
Right, and I think that would, as much as possible, because again, we never ask the community for a twenty million dollar bond or above. I feel for me, it's the most, the responsible choices so that people say, we said, "Okay, the figures were just, they escalated because of the cost. We didn't include soft cost. We did listen to you." And so, in listening to you and yet being still responsible to the district and the needs of the district, that's why I have those figures, if that all makes sense. So, as opposed to going through item by item, I'm moving the total, like you, total cost.
So, like priority one with the top two?
Either one of them, with the top twos or the...
Are the top twos the yellow?
No, the whites, everything but the yellows. So, either way, I mean, there's a few million dollar difference between all twos and no twos or top twos.
Yeah. And that's what this bottom number is also to help represent, is what is the difference between, say, this, this, or this with the turf? And if you look on it for each, whether it's the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home or the one hundred, here it's about two dollars, two dollars and, what is it? One dollar? Buck seventy? And like almost four dollars on the other. That's the difference between the two. Whether they're together or separated, it would still be the same, it's just presented differently.
So, I don't know if that helps, hinders, or...
No, I think it does. Just one question, Greg, on item, what is it? Eighty-four with the heaving sidewalks at the Seawing? Is that like a safety issue as far as like, I mean, I know me and I should trip over everything?
Do you actually build that now? And how many costs is, some of these items that we yelled, we potentially do operate?
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I want to thank Greg as well as Judy, as well as the rest of the administrative team. Because that's one of the things we tried to do over the holiday break, is identify some things. Because we know the overall cost. We're trying to look at ways that we could identify things, either we could do later or that we could plan in our facilities plan as we go forward with the next BCS as well as our budget. So, they put in a lot of time over the break week, so.
Okay, so I think, do we have everybody's kind of in agreement with the one that's highlighted there?
Well, except if it's going to be...
Yeah, no, no, I know that. That's our next thing. But I just kind of want to get this part out.
So, that's just top twos and not all twos, correct?
Right. And you're okay with the ones and you've all looked at those to see which are the top two? Administration shows that. So, yes, yes? Matt? Yeah, okay. Okay. So, that would be the one.
Can I ask Mr. Nolte a question?
I'm still against it, Diane.
Okay, so, well, we're not really moving.
One of the threes is painting in the buildings. Are, are community members allowed to paint in the buildings? I know there's union issues and all the rest, but let's say we want to have a board painting party. Hey, people were actually painting Elsmere before Elsmere got painted. But could, for example, a PTA buy the paint and the community members paint in elementary school if they...
There are no union issues here. In, long ago, we did have some community members paint. I think more paint was potentially on the floor than actually made it to the walls. We haven't had great success. However, Tom, I know in your school district, you had great success with students painting. So, there's no rules that says that we can't. However, we've done everything from a contracted painting where we hire, we will hire somebody to paint X amount of classrooms. We've actually had in-house crews do it. I've hired some extra summer help and have had some interested custodians go around. I think it was two, three, four years ago, we had thirty-one classrooms painted here by in-house staff.
Because I know that was on a priority three, but I could tell you from being in the school that got painted after twenty-some odd years, it made a huge difference on how people felt about that building.
But that's something you could absorb in the budget.
That should be an operating, you know, we should come up with a plan and it should be an operating item.
Great.
Okay. Any community members want to ask anything at this point? Okay, so then our next thing, I think that's all we have to do, is how we're going to put this up. So, I know Mike had made some suggestions. Sure.
Do you want me to recap that?
I'd love that.
My recommendation is that we put up two bond propositions, one for the priority ones and top twos and a separate proposition for the turf field. My concern is that based on the community input, at least I've been getting, seems to me that the only controversial element of this is the turf field. And I would hate to endanger the main bond proposition because the community is opposed to the field. I would love to have it for the students, but personally, I still see it as a want, not a need. So, I think in the interest of serving the community, we should let them vote on the two things separately. What I had discussed earlier was we would build into the main bond proposition the drainage for the football field because that's got to be done. And then, on the field, the turf field proposition, put in language that says, "If that proposition passes, but the main bond fails, we will not proceed with the turf field because it will be state-able at that point."
It's also a track, too.
Right, right.
Track, S C D.
Okay. Anyone else want to?
I'll just say, I just think it's important, and this is, you know, for past history, it's important for the board to actually submit something out to the community for their vote with, you know, with everybody kind of working together and compromising. So, I'm willing to compromise on this and have two separate, you know, two separate bonds. Because I think it is so important to have that maintenance done. I mean, it really is, really is important. And, and I think that, you know, if the community supports both, that'll be great. But we really want to ensure that that maintenance gets done. So, I'm willing to support having two separate propositions.
Okay. And I think two weeks ago, did you mention that you put the playgrounds in that, the turf?
Well, I just wondered whether it was worthwhile putting some other things with the turf field. But I mean, that's up to, you know, it's up to the board. I mean, as it is, the PTAs may be paying for a portion of those anyhow.
Well, I know, I don't know what Elsmere's going to do with money, but, I mean, that actually is the model I always supported, was if people want something, they can pony up some of the money like everyone else. But given that the majority of the board felt like that this should be on it, I would support two separate bonds, partly because, I guess I said, I went back and looked at all the notes and the survey, and seven out of the eight groups in that second forum said separate bonds if the field's on. And the only group that said yes said, "If you combine it, it may be difficult to convince the voters, but put it up as two propositions, but connect the field with an inside project so aid is available." So, pretty much eight out of the eight groups said that they would go with two separate bonds. The other thing is, I think by doing two separate bonds, a community group came to us last spring and basically said, "Could you put it up for a vote?" That's all they were asking us for. And by combining it with a bond, we are now eligible for state aid. But by, by putting it up as a bond, whether it's separate or combined, we're doing what that group asked us to do in the first place. I mean, it does give the community the choice. And based on the survey results and the forum results, I think it's only responsible for us as a board to put it to the community to vote on the two separate pieces. I would not put a playground on that. I think that's pennies in a bucket. And for me, it's just, you know, it's not a lightning rod issue like the field is. And it's only a chance of saying, "So, the elementary skills, hey, you want those swings, you better vote for this field." And I talk about dividing the community. I'm very much against anything but that field going up separately.
Laura, do you... I think the separate, we need the separate. I think, you know, if the community supports the turf field, because I agree with Mike that I don't think, I think that's not a need. I think it's a want. And if the community is willing to support that, then that's great. I think it'd be wonderful to have that field out there. But I think that we need to see that the community supports it. And I've heard from a number of people that if it's in the main bond, that they will vote it down.
Kate?
I feel like, Lynn, I'm still a huge proponent of the turf field, but I'm okay with it, you separating them. I think the community is going to vote for it. I really do. I don't think it's going to go down at all. I don't think it's going to bring the other bond down. I think you have the right to vote no if you want to. I don't think, and to your comments too, I don't think that we're trying to just throw this money up here and say this. Our hands are tied on ninety percent of the budget with the unions and the pensions and the health care and all this stuff. And I am here for the students. I definitely am. Because the legislation and the unions have tied up almost all the money and no one's looking out for the kids. And somebody has to. And I don't want to have to pay. Nobody wants to have to pay it. You know, I don't have a pension. I don't have retirement. I don't have paid health insurance. I don't have any of those things either. So, I'm coming at it as a private sector person. And that's what I tried to bring to the board for that. But I don't consider athletics a want. I consider athletics as important as the education. I believe you have to have it for character education. That's why I am such a strong proponent. I do not believe in Character Award breakfasts. I do not believe in Character Assembly. It's not me. I do not believe in Character Award breakfasts, I do not believe in Character Assembly. It's not me, I'm old school, and I don't believe in that. I feel you put the kids in front of things and you let them fall, and you catch them in middle school and high school. That's why I don't believe in cameras. I went to a college where it was honor code. You took the test, you left, you came back in two hours, and you put the test there. We didn't have cameras, we didn't have proctors, we didn't take it in the room. I, I mean, and you didn't, if you're gonna cheat, you cheated, if you weren't, you weren't, and that's the way it was. So I, I don't think it's that we're ignoring the community in these things. The buildings have to get fixed. And I do honestly think the kids need this for teamwork, for character building, for getting along with each other, for horrible circumstances, for learning how to lose, for all of these things. And I truly believe that they need it. And I think the community's gonna support it, and that's why, if you want to put it up as two bonds, I'm fine with putting it up as two bonds.
Matt?
I would, I would, I would prefer it as one bond, but again, I'll, I'm sure the community.
Wait, Kate? Can you wait for a few minutes so the board can finish kind of, thank you.
I, I think it should be one bond, but I, again, I reiterate, Kate, I think it's gonna be approved by the community, whether it's one or two. And I think it's important for the community to get behind it and support it. But I would, I would go along with separating it out, although I, I think as one bond, it will pass too, but either way.
And I would have to agree with everybody, too. Charmaine, I did go back and look at those tapes, and you're absolutely right, of those, all those groups, they supported the turf but wanted it out separately, and then we heard from a few people a couple of weeks ago that they wanted it separately. I think it will go forward also, if it's a separate, on, up separately. I just want to make sure, I, I'm not in the total beliefment that it's a want, after like listening to all the things with the turf, the fact that we can use it much longer for our gym stations, our physical education programs, you know, go on it until, you know, October, November, and get back on in March. You know, I've seen the wet fields that we've have had to move games. I see it also like, I mean, they showed us that over the long haul, it's actually gonna be more cost-effective, it's gonna be cheaper, we're not gonna have the upkeep on the maintenance. So I'm more see this turf as, as a need to provide our programs. But with all that said, I'm perfectly okay with that going up. I just want to make sure that we, you know, get it out there, you know, all the things about the turf, and the fact, make sure we have our numbers, because what is it, a difference of like seven dollars?
Six dollars and seventy cents.
Did you do that?
So it's pretty close.
Yeah, I did, six seventy.
Okay, so it's close.
Between the turf and the char.
Dollar seventy at the hundred thousand.
You know, just so, so people, you know, kind of see that, that just for the extra, you know, amount, you know, somehow when we go to promote it. And that it is, you know, cost-effective, too, as far as, you know, keeping it up with the maintenance and all that, you don't have to go out and mow it and line it and all that stuff.
So I just want to make sure, which, which of these two, now, is it the top twos or just the all twos? It's top two.
It's the top two, it's the one that's still highlighted.
We're just separating them.
It's the one that's highlighted, however, we're gonna separate out that.
You'll end up getting this plus a separate, separate line for the turf.
Which, which is nice, because as I said, it comes in under the fifty.
We'll, we'll have to, we'll have to revamp that so that it, now we take away all the others and just put up what it is for you at a public hearing. But let me just clarify, priority ones, top twos on one proposition, along with the drainage, along with the track, you did not mention lighting or the tennis courts.
Nothing on the track. The track's part of the turf field.
What's, what's included in the?
Each, each of those can be.
The existing track.
That is part of one point eight eight.
The track is?
Track, the tennis courts, the lights, the field lights.
Okay. Those were all the things that were already identified that needed to be repaired. So that's, that's all set then. Correct, Greg?
Correct.
So that's part of the one point eight. So all of that would be into the one proposition, and then into the second proposition would be exactly what? Okay, and anything else identified along with that?
That's like the three.
Extra drainage and stuff. Okay.
The eight lane track, yeah, see, it is a different track.
A different track.
Yeah, there, there are some bump ups on that, such as the extra dual lane, the extra drainage, because one drainage is one way, another drainage is another.
And so it would be a three million, one seventy-nine?
I think that's roughly the cost with soft cost. But what I want to get to the board now is take all of our other documents away, now give you just that with the cost breakdowns, exactly the way for each proposition, so that you have one neat document now with what you're proposing that would be presented at a public hearing. Correct? And then that will allow the community to come out, and we'll advertise that. Could we set the date for that between now and the sixteenth tonight?
Can I ask, do we want to ask, I, I, a lot of people have come up to me and talked about the timing of the bond. Do, not necessarily at this meeting, I don't want to, but do we want to consider, do we still want to go with March, or it's only a couple of months before the school budget vote?
No, we wanted, I think we all agreed to do it in March, just because.
Why? You could put up the school budget vote.
You could, but so much other stuff is up on that.
And with the new fiscal year, you do, you don't know if any formulas may change. The deeper one begins.
Yeah, preferably, the March timeline sets it before any new legislation could tentatively go into place.
Okay, it's nine o'clock, so, yeah, take a quick break. Participation, government students, you're welcome to stay, but if you want to sign out, and then some of us have to sign.